I will call the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors' Regular Meeting to order on Tuesday, September the 6th, 2016, General District Courtroom, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. At this time, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Present.
Mr. Barksdale?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any items to add to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Barber and a second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. We're down to the hearing of citizens on our agenda. I don't have anyone who signed up, but is there anyone who did not sign up who would like to speak on the citizens, hearing of citizens? If so, now is the time. Okay, thank you. We're down to our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. We have an introduction we want to do at this time, which is, they are listed on our consent agenda, as well as a, as a presentation. Right now, we're going to ask Mr. Corey Stevens to come forward. He's a member of our, the county's Parks and Recreation Department. He's also the person in charge of the mentor, or the guide, or whatever role, whatever the proper role is, overseeing the Youth Commission. And Mr. Stevens, we thank you for being here, and you have the pleasure of introducing members of the Youth Commission who are present. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Board members. Before I introduce my new, Youth Commission members, I would also like to recognize Hope Casada, standing up. He didn't want me to do this, but he's our intern. He's finishing up 600 hours. He's done a well job for us this summer, so I just wanted to give him a little bit of recognition.
Mr. Stevens, is that mic on? Is there a little light there that should shed at the bottom?
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. 2016, 2017 Youth Commission members. The Youth Commission, as we all know, they're the members and the voices of our communities and the schools of their prospective schools that they go to. So I would like to recognize those new appointees. Mallory Patrick, come on up.
We want to see who you are.
Mallory is a freshman. She goes to Tunstall High School. Ms. Mallory Patrick. Joshua Miller is a senior this year, and this is his third term on the Youth Commission. So he's well seasoned. So we're glad to have him again to be a leader for our commission this year, Joshua Miller. He goes to Chatham High School. Jontay Lutford, he is also a senior at Gretna High School. This is also his third year with the Youth Commission, and we thank you again, Joshua John, as well. And Connor Oliver, he's a junior at Tunstall High School. This is his second year on the commission. Ladies and gentlemen, these are 2016, 2017, members of the Pennsylvania County Youth Commission. Give them a round of applause. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. And thank you all who are serving on the Youth Commission. I had the privilege of the first year that it was created, along with a former supervisor, Brenda Bowman, and we had some, we had some, some great times and some learning experiences, especially the trip to Richmond. So thank you all, and we appreciate what you're doing because it is certainly value-added. So thank you. You may take your seats. Okay, next, I'm going to call Mr. Sides and Mr. Rowe and Mr. Davis for the next presentation. You go into, Mr. Rowe. He's yielded. Ladies and gentlemen, what we have is a resolution to the Intertate Polymer Group, the winners of the Environmental Protection Agency's Virginia NASCAR Challenge Award. And Mr. Rowe is going to do the pleasures of reading the resolution.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we in Pennsylvania County, we always know that our businesses are doing well, but it's always nice to have folks from outside the region, and outside of the state, and frankly throughout the country, recognize our businesses. So we're very fortunate and very grateful to have Michael Jones with us this evening, plant manager for the Danville, Pennsylvania County Intertate Plant. And the resolution reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors held on September 6th, 2016, in the General District Courtroom of the Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Intertate Polymer Group is a recognized leader in the development, manufacturing, sale of paper and fiber-based tapes, as well as polyethylene and specialized polythan fibers, I'm sure Mike can correct me on this. Whereas IPG located a manufacturing facility in Pennsylvania County in 1987 and a distribution facility in 2004, whereas IPG has steadily grown and improved its operations in the county, downplaying approximately 300 people. And whereas the principles of continuous improvement, along with increased efficiency and energy costs, and reduced environmental impacts, have been embraced by the overall corporation, and particularly by the Pennsylvania County Facility. And whereas the efforts and actions of the Pennsylvania County IPG Facility have been recognized through prestigious national awards from the Energy Star Program and the Virginia NASCAR E3 Green Challenge. And whereas these awards specifically recognize the company's reductions in energy use and greenhouse gas emissions, additionally, the efforts have also reduced energy costs to make Pennsylvania County IPG Facility more economically successful. Then be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its congratulations to Intertate Polymer Group for their national energy efficiency awards and its appreciation for the great economic benefits the local IPG operation brings to Pennsylvania County. Be it further, therefore, resolved that a copy of this resolution to be presented by representatives of Intertate Polymer Group, given under my hand this sixth day of September 2016, Justin Barksdale and County Administrator Clarence Monday. So, Mr. Barksdale?
On behalf of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, we commend you and we thank you for the measuring up to the challenge. And this, Mr. Davis, the business is in his district, that's why he's here as well. So on behalf of the Board, we say thank you for a job well done.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, just like to say thank you very much. It's quite an honor to be recognized by the Board of Supervisors. Our employees have been very busy over the last several years trying to come up with creative ways to save energy and to help improve the business from an environmental standpoint, and they've just done outstanding a job. I just want to recognize them for all their efforts, both at the manufacturing facility and the distribution, which is right next door to us. So I want to thank them and thank you all again.
Thank you.
We are at item seven on our agenda, public hearing. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. The county purchased a building and land located at 123 Tight Squeeze Road for public purposes, specifically for the sheriff's use and storage for his office. There is a potential tenant interested in renting approximately 1,100 square feet of office space. That tenant also rented that space prior to ownership by the county, and that tenant has expressed continued interest in renting this same space, which would be an additional revenue source to the county. Since it is public property, a public hearing is required to consider this request from the trustees of the United Steelworkers Local Union 9428. The proposed lease agreement with that entity starts in your board packet on page 33. And, Mr. Chairman, again, the purpose is to consider public input as required by the Code of Virginia. Following public comment, the staff does recommend, following the public hearing, the Board approves the proposed lease agreement as presented and authorized the Chairman of the Board to sign the proposed lease and any other necessary documentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monday. Before I open the public hearing, I would like those who have signed up to speak to know that you will have three minutes to make comments, and know that the format is not a question and answer exchange. And I will call the names in the order that they are signed up. I will open the public hearing, item seven, at 7:14. No one signed up to speak to item seven on the agenda, but if there is someone who would like to speak who did not sign up, now is the time, and you would, you're able to, to make comments. Anyone? Hearing none. I'm closing the public hearing at 7:14. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the lease and authorize the County Administrator to sign any documents needed to carry through with said document.
Sir, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to the lease as, as a matter, but I'm opposed to this particular lease. I think we need some clarity on item number five. I don't know that I want to sign a lease that says lease or is responsible for the electricity and water, especially at the rate that we're willing to lease this to. And I don't know that I can support a lease that leaves the liability insurance definition as adequately insured. I would rather see a defined dollar amount, so we know that the county is protected and covered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other discussion? Mr. Hagerman?
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with Mr. Warren, and, but otherwise, the, the agrees, or the agreement would, would meet my satisfaction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hagerman.
Mr. Chairman, just as clarity, I'd like to yield to legal counsel that if we have the option to clean this up and bring it back at the next meeting.
The state code just requires you to have a public hearing. We can clean this up and bring it back. As far as the, the water and electricity, I will, if the, as the Board's direction, I will branch the subject with the United Steelworkers. I just talked to Mr., to the Honorable Sheriff Mike Carroll, he stepped out, but he said they only are there maximum of one day per month. So I, I don't think we're going to get yells on gas and electricity, but if it's the Board's pleasure, I will certainly take it back and clean this up. And we don't have to act tonight, just before we execute this, state code says we just have to have a public hearing. We had one today, no one spoke, so we can, we can address these issues in a future day if you set us up.
Okay. So do we need a substitute, a substitute motion if we want to?
You can just table this and direct me to clean up these two sections and bring it back to you.
Okay, do we need a motion to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we table this motion in order to clean up items
number five and item number six concerning the liability insurance.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute mot, motion by Mr. Warren and a second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion?
Just one quick question. When I read this lease, I was wondering some of that too, and I made the motion to get discussion going with it, going, going with the matter. Is it just one water meter and one electrical meter on that building?
I believe so. The sheriff is much more familiar with this building than I am, so he may be able to answer questions. I believe there's only one water and.
Before you speak, Sheriff, would you, Sheriff Taylor, would you come forward? Mr. Blackstock, would you state, restate your concern?
Sheriff, I know you, I realize you were out of the room and you didn't catch the front part of the discussion, but on the, we discussed the lease with the steelworkers in the building over there that you, you're going to utilize. Michael, it appears we're going to vote to table a motion tonight to clear up some things on, with insurance. One of the questions I had, and one of the other board members spoke to it earlier, was a concern in the water and electrical, and they're only going to utilize the building once a month?
That's my understanding, yes, so that's about once a month.
And is, is it only one water meter over there and one electrical meter for that entire building, or do you know is it a segment at all?
I think it's one meter for each, and, but different electrical boxes in each end of the building, but one meter.
That comes in to, to the bill itself? Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff Taylor. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Monday, so if we got electricity coming in at two different points, then adding a meter for the electricity wouldn't necessarily be a cost prohibitive item.
As far as the lease goes, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
The sheriff, or Mr. Hunt, maybe he could answer that?
I'm no electricity, but I don't think it should be cost prohibitive.
I wouldn't think so.
Any other discussion?
Come on in, check in.
Okay, Mr. Barber?
It depends on how that building was built, because it can get pricey. I had one split like that, and it can be very expensive, if it's, depending on how it was laid out when it was built.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it's unanimous. We're at item eight on the agenda, another public hearing. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The Finance Committee has discussed the method of which the merchant's capital tax is assessed in the rates of this inventory tax. Presently, the tax rate is $2.75 per $100 of assessed value at 30% of the inventory's original value. The system and the rates have been in place for many years and has not changed recently to accommodate large, high-dollar inventories. The Finance Committee requested amendments, and the Board of Supervisors authorized tonight's public hearing. Public input is solicited at this time to consider changing the merchant's capital tax methodology. This is highlighted on page 75 of your board packet in Resolution 2016-09-01. I'd like to turn your attention to that resolution for just a minute. Again, that's on page 75 in your board packet. Now, what's included in this resolution? It says in here that the Board is considering changing only the methodology at this point in time. This is not the public hearing on the budget impact. That public hearing will follow subsequent to this meeting if the Board votes in the affirmative to adopt this resolution, which only changes the methodology. Currently, the methodology that's in place for the merchant's capital tax is in the first paragraph of that resolution. Again, that's $2.75 per $100 of assessed value at 30% of the inventory's value. Proposed this evening, the Board is hearing public input on, is the table that's in the middle of that resolution on page 75. It says that the rate would remain at 275 through all three of those tiers effective January 1st, 2016. In other words, it's retro to the beginning of this particular year. Tier one would be 30% of the original inventory cost of inventory that is there, an aggregate of $1 to $1 million. Tier two would be at 10% of the original inventory cost, and that tier is for $1 million and $1 to $5 million. And the third and final tier would be at 5% of the original inventory cost on inventory at $5 million and one to an unlimited dollar amount. And, Mr. Chairman, this resolution, if adopted by the Board this evening, would simply amend to the latter process and methodology that I just mentioned in my opening comments. So, Mr. Chairman, in summary, if the Board desires change in this process, we would ask you to approve Resolution 2016-09-01 by recorded vote. And then two would be to authorize the staff to set the second required public hearing. This one would be on October 3rd at 7:00 PM to discuss amending the county budget commensurate with that change in the merchant's capital tax assessment methodology.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Monday. I will open the public hearing at 7:23. And again, those who have signed up to speak, your comments are limited to three minutes. And again, it's, it's not a question or answer format. We have, we have Mr. John Merricks.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. How you guys doing? I don't even think you're not going to answer me. This is probably my fourth visit here, and I've not met all of you. You know, sitting on top of Robin, several of you guys I have, ladies, gentlemen. This tax change that you're doing, as far as I'm concerned, will probably save about 50 jobs in a week or so. So you did good there, because I was getting ready to take my stuff south, come on. I really think we need to retro it back another year. Just being honest with you, I don't think the, the audit wasn't done fairly, period. And there's no doubt in my mind, or anybody else's mind, when you're handed a sheet of paper saying, hey, you owe $98,000, pay it, and then you hand it out right off the top of your $124,000, when you're used to paying $4,000 or $5,000 a year. And I know you can't answer a question, but Tommy had a, if you were at $5 million and above, you would, the tier one and two doesn't apply, you just go right to 5%. That's what I'm assuming. So maybe I can sit down with one of you actually afterwards and do just one little math problem, and that way I'll know how your methodology works on this, and so I can go back and have my paper scribbled. But the main reason why I stood up here is, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Warren, and Mr. Scares, you guys I've talked to more than anybody. You guys didn't let it drop. You told me you wouldn't let them all drop, and you didn't, and I appreciate it. Amen to that, sir. And I know y'all worked hard too, and like I said, I didn't have as much communication with y'all as I did with these fellows, especially Mr. Davis, being the director of the district. But he called me a lot, and he was as mad as I was, and he said, this is not right, and we're going to get it straight. And I hope I didn't make Ms. Hammick mad. I really don't care one way or the other there, because I don't think it was done fairly. But the reason why I stood up is, this, this should work a lot better for us, and I want to thank you guys, and I appreciate your work, really, because I know you work hard on it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merricks. Next, we have Mr. Edmund Millam.
My name is Edmund T. Mallon. My own mall is a truck, and I was quick. The way I learned about this thing was they handed me a subpoena for all my records and all my books. And I know of nobody else in the county that did that to me. When I moved here from Halifax County, I met with a tax man out on my lot. Up until this year, he told me it won't, no taxes on equipment and stuff is sold. Okay? These people told me that they'd come back and had another meeting, and now they got taxed. But in all taxes, it's loopholes. I work 50 to 70 minutes, and if this tax go through, it costs me too much money, all I got to do is move up the road two miles to down. And they'll finance me a building for 15 years free taxes, because I'm going to bring 50 to 75 jobs. When I moved out, I asked this man, and I said, what have you got to offer me? He said, nothing. I said, well, how about my trash pickup? He says, nothing. So what did any of y'all do for me, except try to charge me taxes that I don't owe? I mean, you can, you can go ahead with this tax, but you will price yourself out of county. And I'm one can move up the road all in 12 acres. I can move up the road for 30 days and come back and beat your lawn. And I don't spend any money to do it. But I ain't going to be railroaded, and I ain't going to be treated unequally. And when you tax me, I want to see everybody else's tax right in that book. You've got motor vehicles right here in the county, just like mine. You know how much they pay taxes? $18.75, Alabaster Motors. What is wrong with that? All the grocery stores have got million-dollar worth of products in it. They got a tax, that's what this tax was for, for grocery stores, food stores, and restaurants. You're going to charge me, you gotta believe, without a doubt. You are going to give me praises on every grocery store, because I'm going to send somebody up here, and I'm going to copy this tax, move back here, and if you charge me like you do everybody else, I'm filing. But I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millam. That was the name, allow us that name on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone who did not sign up who would like to speak? If so, come forward. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for item eight at 7:29. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, we approve Resolution 2016-09-01 and authorize the staff to set a public hearing to be held at the Board's Regular Meeting on October 3rd, 2016, to amend FY 2017 county budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hagerman?
Mr. Mallon, you're not the only one who's, who's suffered through this. And I was just telling one of my member of the Board of Supervisors here that I was first told that my little business, and I own, own and run a gun shop, that all my, all my guns in there for sale was going to have to be taxed. Well, that... Well, that, that sounds pretty good, except I may have a gun in my shop for two years, or maybe even four years or five years. And, and, yes. And I cannot pay probably as much. I guess what I'm trying to say is, my shop does not bring in much money. So I certainly, it's, I mean, it's more of a hobby to me, but still, if I had to pay that kind of taxes, I'd, I'd close it down. And I'll notify you when I do. But this, this is going to run so many businesses, small businesses, Aldis, Aldis County. And I did have it with me, a sheet showing that even, and they're, they're going to tell you that this, this tax has been lowered. And it has, but it's still, to me, it is still higher than the surrounding taxes and, or surrounding counties. So, so I'm sure I'll, I'll get a little bit of feedback from that. But I still think it's too high, and I wish, wished I could do something about it.
Why wouldn't you? If you're going to run y'all out of county businesses?
I realize that, sir. I, I'm only one person, and there's almost nothing I can do, except show my disfavor of this, this tax. Nice meeting you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to add that, in defense, I don't know that I need to defend, in defense of Ms. Hammack and the Commission of Revenue, she doesn't set, she doesn't make the laws here in the county. She just is, she has to enforce what we decide. And it's a tough job. And so, I know it's been hard. You've heard, you've had a lot of comment on this and a lot of feedback. But in the end, a buck stops with the board, not with Ms. Hammack. She's just the person that has to issue what needs to be paid. And of course, you pay the treasurer. I'd like to thank Ms. Hammack and her staff for the hard work they put in assisting the board and working through this and making changes.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
When you treat people unequally...
Is there any further discussion, sir? Is there any further discussion? Okay, this requires a roll call vote, Mr. Monday.
Sir, Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
No.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Yes.
Moving to item nine on the agenda, we have a third public hearing. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Whenever amendments to the county budget exceed one percent of the total approved expenditures, county is required by state code to conduct a public hearing prior to considering the said amendments. There are four categories to hear public comment on this evening, including, number one, and I'm just going to briefly go through the, so the public is properly informed in order to make the comment. One would be a one hundred three thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety cents increase in the employer's share of health insurance coverage for county employees. Two would be three million, two hundred forty-three thousand dollar appropriation for constructing the animal shelter. Third category would be carryovers, also known as reappropriations, from the FY sixteen budget that was budgeted for expenditure to the current budget year FY seventeen. And those are in, further divided into two categories. One would be an encumbered category at six hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and seventeen cents. Those are what we call projects that are in process now. They were started in the prior fiscal year. They haven't been completed yet, therefore, the plan is to continue with those projects. And then the other category of carryovers will be known as discretionary. And the revised amount that we would ask the board to consider would be one million, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And that is depicted on spreadsheets that you have stapled, put at your dais this evening. I'll talk more about those in a few minutes when we get to that item number for a specific vote. And the fourth and final category for public comment would be carryovers of two million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, four dollars and eighty-eight cents from FY sixteen to FY seventeen in the school budget. And, Mr. Chairman, I will emphasize again, because it's important enough to say, that these carryovers, it was assumed that those amounts will be expended in the last budget year. And each one of the requests has a story that is contained within the spreadsheets of your board packet and the revised one that Ms. Vanderhyde provided for you this evening. Ms. Vanderhyde is here. Some of the offices requesting those carryovers are here this evening. If you have further questions. And, Mr. Chairman, the staff does recommend conducting the public hearing and following public comment and any discussion by the board, taking each of those four categories separately. And I'll be more than happy to reiterate the staff recommendation when we get to those one at a time.
Great, Mr. Monday. Good. Does everyone, did everyone receive the new spreadsheet? Everyone has it? Okay. I will open the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. We did not have anyone who signed up for item number nine on the agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, if you desire to make comments on this item, you may do so at this time. Okay, see you none. I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. What is the pleasure of the board?
You just need a vote, don't you? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first one that we'll ask the board to consider is page eighty-four of your board packet. The staff does recommend here that the board appropriate a total of one hundred three thousand, two seventy-one ninety to increase the employer's share of health insurance coverage for the county employees for the upcoming plan year. This one has a motion that was recommended by the Finance Committee, and it has now met the ten-day layover. So this one here, we will be ready for any discussion and a recorded vote for this one item only at this time.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on item A? Okay, I think we're ready to vote, Mr. Monday.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, item B, the staff recommends that you continue the animal shelter appropriation. This one here would be in the amount of three million, two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the construction of the new animal shelter. This one here has also met the ten-day layover. Following any discussion, it would need a recorded vote to finish that appropriation.
Do we have any further discussion on item B?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scares?
Yes, just like to state, last, at the last meeting, I would have voted against this proposal. And the reasons being, I felt we should have been doing a robust fundraising to accomplish a task. But after talking with the Finance Director, I feel like our finances are going to be in fairly good shape till the end of the year. And, and to show of unity with the board that passed this at the last meeting, I'll go ahead and vote for it this time around. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the people knew where, how I would stand at the last month's meeting and make sure, you know, for transparency purposes, they knew how I felt on it. Thank you.
Mr. Scares, thank you. The board thanks you. Any other discussion? Okay, here are none. Mr. Monday?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, listed as C in your board packet, this has two subcomponents. If you wish, you could vote on these in a block. Or you can pull them out and vote on them individually if you have some disagreement on those and you wish to dissent, like you have the right to do. Again, I would just say that the first one that we have here would be what we know as encumbered carryover request that amounts to six seventy-six, nine thirty, seventeen. There in the spreadsheet, if you'll look at the handout that I gave you earlier, they would be called the encumbered category. They start on page one, and they continue over to page two and page three. Some of these includes items for the treasurer, the registrar, sheriff, fire and rescue, has several, animal control, buildings and grounds, recreation, the local emergency planning commission, the youth commission, the health insurance contribution, and the landfill. Again, what those are, they were projects that started last fiscal year, but they could not be finished in the short amount of time remaining in that fiscal year. The other category is known as discretionary. They're not quite like the category that, that I just mentioned. The revised amount for these would be one million, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And the only difference in what is in your board packet, if you'll go to page four of the revised spreadsheet that was given to you this evening, or in the category labeled jail. You'll notice in here, two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is requested for carryover. And Ms. Vanderhyde and the sheriff are here if you have any further questions on this particular item. But what we're trying to do is find a way to allow the sheriff to have ample resources to do his job, but also to make sure we utilize any current monies that we have somewhere else that we may not, can use for expenditure in any other category to save the local share of money. And what we have for you in here would be to allow the payment of some increased insurance costs that are passed on from the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Department of Risk Management for the various constitutional offices. Sheriff's office was hit hardest at over a hundred thousand dollars compared to the others. There was some money budgeted for this increase in the premium, but we had no idea it would be that high. So what the eighty-three thousand dollars does in the far right-hand column that's different from what's in your board packet, it allows the sheriff to cover that increase without having to go into his operating budget. And what it, what he is also trying to do is make sure that when the courthouse security project goes online, he's got to have the staff to man the entrance to that consolidated point of entry. And we know it will not be a full fiscal year when this project starts. You know, here we are, September. It's got to go out for bid. It's got to be constructed, equipment procured, and the personnel put in place. So we think by the revised plan that we have here, it will allow him to bring in deputies, pay them a part-time salary instead of adding full-time positions for that exclusive purpose. And Sheriff, I know that you, Ms. Vanderhyde, we've all been working on this one up until the last minute. And I will pause here in case Ms. Vanderhyde and/or the sheriff has anything to add about this category, or if there are any questions before you consider this one for a vote.
Okay. Ms. Vanderhyde or Sheriff Taylor, either? Okay? Sheriff Taylor, please.
I think Mr. Monday has the extra job to explain.
Okay. Mr. Monday, if we approve as a, as a block, as you said, so could you give us a little beginning of the motion that we need to?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. The staff recommends that the board reappropriate a total of six hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and seventeen cents in encumbered carryover amounts. And reappropriate a total of one million, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars in carryover amounts in the discretionary category.
Okay, we'll take that as our motion. Is there a motion? Who makes the motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir, I make that, I make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Warren. Discussion.
Mr. Monday, are you in support of these carryovers? I know the encumbrances we basically have spent. But the additions to this, are you in support of this? And you think it's the best way for the county to underfunds? Mr. Chairman, absolutely. I have reviewed every one of these in great detail, and I do recommend all of those that I just summarized for the board.
Any other discussion? Will this be a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Yes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, finally, it would be item D. The staff recommends appropriating to the school board's FY two thousand and seventeen budget, two million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, four dollars and eighty-eight cents. And this one here will require a motion, a second discussion, and does not require a ten-day layover. We can do a recorded vote following the motion and the second. I do see our Superintendent, Dr. Jones, and Ms. Worley here. If they have anything to add, or if you have any questions with them.
Okay, Ms. Worley or Dr. Jones? Anything that you would like to add? Okay, all right, we appreciate you being here. Okay, the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we appropriate the funds as requested.
I second it.
Motion by Mr. Warren and a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? We can do a hand vote? Or do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Boggsdale?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
We thank Sheriff Taylor for being here, and Ms. Vanderhyde, Ms. Worley, and Dr. Jones, just in case we got through. Thank you. Okay, we're down to new business. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The August twenty sixteen expenditure refunds total sixty-four thousand, one thirty-three, ninety-one. At this meeting, we'll need a motion and a second to start the ten-day layover.
Do I have a motion to approve the expenditure?
Some of it.
Okay.
I second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Barber and a second by Mr. Davis. Okay, ten-day layover. Item eleven, request for public hearing, Emergency Medical Advisory Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Emergency Medical Advisory Committee, we call it EMAC for short, requests change in the funded distribution frequency of the emergency billing funds that goes to the volunteer EMS agencies. They want that to go from quarterly, the way those funds are dispersed now, to monthly, so they get their funds faster. Since this is included in the county code, it does require a public hearing before you can further consider the request. Staff does recommend the board of supervisors authorize staff to advertise this matter for public hearing. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just ask that it be open-ended as to far as when. We have to make sure we meet the notice requirement, that it either be at the adjourned September meeting or the first meeting in October.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the advertisement for a public hearing for the above proposed revision, which is included in our packet, to Pennsylvania County Code thirty-one dash three-point-one-three-B.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Warren. Discussion. I know it was, it was stated in the executive information that it's just, the only word, it's just one word change. Is that correct, again?
Yes, sir.
Just from quarterly to monthly?
Monthly, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call in favor? Raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you. Item twelve, the Community Policy Management Team Attendance Report. We have Ms. Milner here to share some information.
Good evening. I have a couple of things to present to you today. To begin with, it's the CPT attendance report. As you see in your board packet, attendance report there, all members are in compliance as of today in order to remain in compliance with Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash ten dash zero-two. That resolution states that all... That resolution states that all members shall attend seventy-five percent of regularly scheduled meetings unless mitigated circumstances are approved. And we are in compliance with that resolution as of today. The second thing to present to you today is our 2015 CSA program audit, and that is also included in your board packet. There are several things that were highlighted in this audit as positive of, of the CSA program. Those things are reduction in the average length of stay per child in residential setting decreased from one seventy-nine to a hundred and fifteen days. The percentage of youth receiving community-based services, out of youth receiving all CSA-funded services exceeds the statewide target by twenty-five percent. The percentage of youth with a decrease in the child behavioral, emotional needs domain as reported via the Child Adolescent Needs and Strengths Assessment exceeds the statewide target by five-point-one percent. Decreases in those CAMs scores are generally indicative of improved functioning for the children. Also, there's been one hundred percent parent attendance and participation in the family assessment and planning team meetings over the last year, which speaks highly of the family engagement that we have in our program and their voice being heard and them being a part of our team. And lastly, the implementation of quarterly utilization reviews of all CSA-funded cases in accordance with our locally adopted policies. So, those are all just a brief highlight of all the great things that our CSA program has been doing in the last year. And this audit goes from January, goes from January one, 2015, to December thirty-first, 2015. One thing to note is that this is the first audit, and that next program there, it states that our audit concluded that there were deficiencies in internal controls. A major note is that this is the first audit that hasn't indicated that there were major deficiencies. It just notes deficiencies. So, they were not major. They were minor. So, those two things that were noted were that our wraparound funds for students with disabilities were not effectively utilized. And the second thing is that annual training of local CSA stakeholders had not been provided in accordance with local policy and procedure. So, our quality improvement plan in order to rectify these findings are, number one, that we are going to do a little bit more research into our SPED wrap funding and see how we can effectively utilize that while remaining within our policies and procedures and state guidelines. CSA office staff will be attending the training on September the thirtieth. There will be state representation there, as well as CSA coordinators from other localities throughout the state who have had experience in utilizing this money effectively, so to gain some knowledge from that aspect and be able to do that in the upcoming months in the next year. As far as the training goes, we attend the CSA conference located in Aurora, Virginia each and every year. In 2015, twelve members from Pennsylvania County attended. And the state recognizes that, but our policy states that we will have a combined training to bring all stakeholders into play, whether that be agency directors, or the superintendent, or court staff. CPMT members and FAP members alike, to bring them all into, into one training and train collectively all together. So, that is being scheduled for November of this year as well. So, we are going to render each finding that was found within, hopefully by year end. Looking to see, I think that's all about the audit. Are you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think it's ironic that the state come in and slapped your hand for not spending forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars that you didn't really feel like you needed to spend. And that was one of the two deficiencies they found. That's really our government at work these days. Slap your hand for not spending money.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. He asked the same question. I do appreciate your fiscal responsibility, nevertheless. Thank you.
It's good to hear, Ms. Milner, that the parent participation rate has, has increased. Are you, for lack of a different word, are you worried about the deficiencies in being able to accomplish what needs to be done by year end? You mentioned that you hope that you would have them cleared up by then.
The training will absolutely be cleared up by year end, and every year in there forward. With the utilization of those funding for students with disabilities money, it really depends on the child's needs and whether they fit that guideline in order to be able to use that money. So, I can't speak definitively on that, but it's my hope that after we gain some more knowledge about how other localities are appropriately using those funds, that we will be able to going forward. We definitely have the children in our community with needs. It's just that guidelines are put on this specific pot of money. We definitely don't want to use that outside of those guidelines, so we've been a little bit more careful with that pot of money. So, going forward, I'm hoping that we'll just get more clarity on how we can do it effectively.
Thank you. Mr. Monday?
I would defer to Mr. Warren, and then I wish to add something.
Okay, Mr. Warren.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to, while we have her here, to let the board know, I know it's in our packet, and let the citizens know. Unfortunately, Ms. Milner is leaving us, and she has done a wonderful job. I've had the pleasure of being on this board the last nine months, and it's amazing to me, everything that you all do and have done, and coming to the meetings and reading all the numbers. I would challenge all of our board members, if you haven't, to particularly review the audit in detail, and secondly, to look at the state level of these fundings, because it's apparent that this is probably a rising cost, and a lot of it's going to be passed down to the localities. And we won't have a lot to, to say about it. It'll just be passed on to us, so you all, please, take time to review that. And just for informational sakes, Mr. Chairman, you would notice in there that on February, Ms. Vanderhyde and I both missed a meeting. That was because we couldn't be in two places at one time. We had a finance committee meeting, and Mr. Blackstock would not give us an excused absence, so we showed up for that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Well said. The board thanks you, Ms. Milner, and wish you great things, but certainly, your services has, have been value-added. So, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just, just for the public, this has nothing to do with you, but this gets under my skin constantly. We've got two examples in here tonight of the state pushing costs down on a locality. One of them is the sheriff's budget, where they up your insurance costs. His portion of that, not counting the other constitutional offices, with that state insurance is over a hundred thousand dollars. If they just tell us, we've got to pay. We don't have a choice. And the others is with this, with CSA. They're always passing costs down to us that the locality has to pick up. Couple of months ago, we voted on one of these that come up. It was substantial. I forget the exact number, but it was, I think it was over six figures. And it just keeps coming from his state. And so, it's tough on the localities. Thank you for your hard work. I hate to see you leave.
Thank you.
You, you straightened things out over there. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr., okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, so Mr. Blackstock, he got that right. It was over three hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Blackstock.
Yep, six figures, and I couldn't remember the number. I know the sheriffs because of that money, but it just keeps adding up.
Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I would like to, to thank Ms. Milner for her years of service. I've been doing my type of work for a long time, and I can tell you that she is a very dedicated department manager. She has done a good job. During the time that I've been here, I've had the pleasure of having two really good CSA coordinators. Ms. Childress did a good job, turned the reins over to Ms. Milner, and Ms. Milner has taken it to the next level and has done a really good job in maintaining that program the way it should be done. And I will miss her expertise. I also wanted to let you and the public know that we've already advertised for the position, and we're working hard behind the scenes to get someone named in that position as soon as possible. And I'll let you know once we have someone else in place. But, Ms. Milner, good luck to you and your new professional endeavors, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, recommendation from a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I am leaving this position sometime in the next few months. We've been working together on that for several months now. And you, as a board, you've had a couple of closed meetings already to start discussing the candidates that have applied and deciding who and when you want to interview those candidates. And I have a statement that I would like to read that outlines your process for a while, so that you can consider those candidates. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-twelve, Section B, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors will be holding closed meetings at undisclosed locations within the following fifteen days for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Pennsylvania County Administrator. That statement will be read again at a future board meeting or board meetings as necessary so the board can consider those candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. Item fourteen, we have an appointment. It looks like it's the Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services Board, appointing representative for the Callens and Gretna. Mr. Hagerman, would you like to make comments on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Actually, according to Mrs. Kim Vanderhyde, is the Callens and Gretna representative on the Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Service Board for a term beginning August the first, 2016, through June the thirtieth, 2016.
Nineteen.
I'm sorry?
Thousand nineteen.
Okay, where did the nineteen go? Okay, I didn't see that. Anyway, it's for a term through 2019.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hagerman and a second by Mr. Barber. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Welcome aboard again, Ms. Vanderhyde. Both myself and Supervisor Warren are on the DPCS board, and we're delighted to have another coworker join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Okay, we're down to, unless we missed something, and I don't believe we did, to board announcements, and we're going to start with Mr. Barber.
I have none.
Mr. Hagerman?
I have none.
Mr. Blackstock?
Just a reminder, the shrimp fest is tomorrow night, and I'll be there. No, no rude comments about how much I eat. I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Scares?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everyone. I had a pretty intensive surgery last month at White Forest, and I just wanted to thank everyone that kept me in their thoughts and prayers. Having people in your corner when you're going through what I went through, it's pretty important. It really hit me in my heart, and I appreciate it, and I just want to make sure people knew how much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scares. Mr. Davis?
No, sir, I have none. We're glad that Mr. Scares is doing better, though. We did have, we remembered him in prayer last, last meeting. One more que, one more statement I do have to announce to this man right here who is in my district. If, if there was ever fiscal responsibility ever exercised, the sheriff's department does it. And there's more to that operation that I have found out, sir, that I am not at liberty to discuss in the public. But however, I'm hoping that in the future, the things that we have coming to Pennsylvania County, I'm very excited, as Mr. Blackstock would say, not over the shrimp, but over the things that are coming to Pennsylvania County. I'm trusting that we're going to be able to offset a lot of costs through revenue generated through other entities that are interested in our county. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to help the sheriff's department in the future, because I have a main objective with the sheriff's department for some reason. I don't know if it's because of him, but nevertheless, we've got a good man in place, and I appreciate the sheriff, as well as all those that are in office that serve us in Pennsylvania County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, I've said this many times, but, you know, I just think it is truly a privilege as a board member to serve here with the employees we have that are so willing to give their time and talent, and it extends beyond just the county employees and certainly into the constitutional officers. We, we appreciate your efforts. I know sometimes, because you're out there day-to-day with the public, you kind of catch the heat, and, Ms. Hammack, I'm sorry you caught it on this particular issue, but it wasn't your fault. It was something we should have addressed a long time ago that we didn't, and we're sorry we put you under fire, especially kind of the first year of being at the helm. But we appreciate your efforts, and we're, we're standing there with you, and we also recognize our businesses, because we, we do want to keep you here in the county, and it, and it, it did my heart good, Mr. Merricks, to hear you say that you were keeping those fifty jobs here, and, you know, there were some other comments, but this tax is being applied equally to the food lines and everyone else. So, you know, I know there were some comments made about that, but it is being applied across the board, and those adjustments have, have been made, and, and we do want to be business-friendly, and we certainly want to support industry coming new, but we want to keep the ones we got. And thank goodness for Mr. Rowe, he's doing a great job in, in trying to get us some new ones, but I really appreciate you bringing one in tonight that we recognize the efforts of the ones that are already here, too. That was outstanding. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I want to welcome Ron back, and Ron, Mr. Scares, really, really happy everything went like it did, and glad you got the great news, and once again, prayer works. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I echo the same sentiments, Mr. Scares, and I, and I really applaud you for, after obtaining more information about the budget, that you reached a different decision, and it definitely did show integrity and unity in this board, but me especially as chair. I appreciate that, sir. Thank you. I have just one thing. The governor will be in town on Thursday, the eighth, to make a big, I mean, a really, really gigantic announcement. So, if you all can, please come out and be there to hear it for yourself and not read about it late, later in the paper. We'll have dignitaries, not only from, from other countries, but even a different continent. So, that's how big it is. So, if you have the opportunity, we'll be at the institute, and everything begins at one P.M. at the Gene Haas Center there at the institute. Okay, a report from legal counsel. Not one thing, Mr. Hunt? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mr. Monday?
No, sir, damage is done for the evening.
Okay.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your being here.